About six thirty, so.
Mayor Swenson, Councilor Gorder.
Here.
Councilor Tafe.
Here.
Councilor Bakel.
Here.
Councilor Kristensen.
Here.
All right, and we have first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions or comments about the agenda or the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to accept the consent agenda, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is Water's Edge and owner Patty Glomstead. Patty, if you'd like to come forward and.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm asking for permission to go past the noise ordinance. I have bands lined up for Heritage Days, so it would be Wednesday, July 3rd until midnight with Hicktown Mafia, and then again on Saturday, July 6th, and that's with the Canyon Cowboys. And that, so I have two other bands in between, but they are done by nine o'clock, and they're just gonna be out on the patio on Thursday and Friday, so.
Would these all be on the patio or on the?
No, the, on the south side of the parking lot, we'll have everything fenced off. I've talked to Mitch a little bit about it, and he told me to get ahold of the Sheriff's Department or whatever, is it the Sheriff's Posse or whatever? Yep, and then I have people also that'll be there to card, we'll have, kinda like Lakeside with the wristbands and the whole nine yards, and that way.
Okay.
Well, I like that western music, and I like the folks.
Yeah. So, that's it.
Well, I don't have any problem with that.
I think if you talk, talk to Mitch.
Any questions for Patty?
If you've talked to Mitch and he seemed to be okay with it.
Yeah, he just told me, he said they'd be kinda shorthanded, cuz I had asked if we could hire, you know, a few of the police officers or whatever, and he just said that they're kinda shorthanded, and then he's the one that told me to get ahold of the Sheriff's Posse and that, so.
Yeah, it's a busy weekend, and I know he's, he's got his hands full, but.
Yep, and we'll have other people around, I mean, I literally have family coming from North Dakota and that to help, and, you know.
Well, I guess personally, I, I think it's a good thing. More people in town, the better, and I'd make a motion that we approve that. The, the late night thing to midnight.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the request to exceed the ten PM noise ordinance on Wednesday, July 3rd, and Saturday, July 6th, for Heritage Days, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any questions or discussion?
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Nick Goose from Witseth to talk about the road project, so.
Hi, I am Nick Goose with Witseth. Just a quick update on the 2020 road project. We were able to track down the information that we needed, verifying that the city got the small cities grant money. So we did verify that, so we have the resolutions that we'll be looking at tonight. One, declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the proposed assessment, and then the other resolution for the hearing on the proposed assessment. And then that'll get, there will be a publish, publish notice in the paper that'll go out, and then also letters to all of the, all of the properties that are being assessed. And then we'll have the hearing next month, I believe, is when we have it planned for, so. Any questions?
So this is all set to go?
Yep.
I know Randy isn't here tonight, but we've got some quotes for the, the bypass routes or the, for the road project, and I think that's, but that's a separate issue.
Yep.
Does that understand?
Yep, yep, that's a separate issue, yeah, Larry and I'll work with Randy on that, yep. On getting the reimbursement piece of that. Yep.
Okay. Is there any questions or anything from?
I don't have.
It's later on our agenda, too, so.
Okay, yep, I don't have anything else, thank you so much.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Next on the agenda, we have Eugene Rossum to discuss issues with the surface of Depot Lane and Blight, and I.
Not here.
I guess he's not here, so we'll move on to the rest of the agenda, and just a few items I wanted to discuss. You know, Eugene was gonna talk about Blight and the city, and I don't know if all of you have seen a lot of the stuff on social media and so forth about, about Blight and the city, and so I just wanted to propose that we have a work session in the near future to discuss the Blight program and, and what we can do about Blight and the city, so. Do we need ten days' notice on that?
No, we just need three.
Just three, three days' notice?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, do you plan to send out an email or?
Well, I don't know what would be good for people, we were thinking the week of the seventeenth. I don't know how that works for anybody.
Would you, would we wanna have it at noon or thereabouts, or?
June seventeenth.
Um, that's a Monday, that week, Monday, maybe, I don't know.
June nineteenth is Juneteenth.
Yeah, office will be closed on Wednesday. We can't do it on a Wednesday, yeah.
Monday is fine.
I just meant through Monday evening.
In the afternoon.
Monday?
Noon would work for me.
Okay, we'll plan on that, I'll send out an email.
So, what, what time?
Noon.
Noon? Work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. I was also gonna mention that I've been working with Mindot on the crosswalks and signage down by the beach, and so I talked with Trudy Kordowski of, she's the Mindot District Traffic Engineer, and she was able to get the crosswalks marked and to put up some reflective material on the, on the signs for the crosswalks. I'm still working with her at the possibility of getting solar lights for flashing signs, and also maybe some in, in-road signs that would alert people to the crossings, so.
Did she, did you bring up anything about switching into thirty miles an hour right at the start of the beach there?
That would be a little more difficult, and they do seem to be open to maybe moving the forty mile warning sign further south. And, you know, so people will slow down a little sooner rather than way down by the Minawaska House, or the Water's Edge, I mean.
I'm just concerned we'd have two crosswalks that were within the forty mile per hour zone, so that's.
So, but if we had in-road signs, I think that would slow a lot of people down, too, and at least make them aware and so forth, so.
Nope, I like that.
So, so we're still kinda waiting to get approval from Mindot to do that, and, and hopefully we can move forward with that. The last item I just wanted to mention is, I think it's in your pack, it's about a self-service kayak rental, and you know, we don't have to discuss it right now necessarily, but maybe we wanna put it on the work session and just discuss it at the work session, give you a little more time to think about it, but I think one possible location would be right, right behind the band shell at, at the city park, cuz they got a nice level beach there, and, and it'd be sorta hidden from the road and everything, so, but.
They wanna dock?
Uh, no, I don't think they need a dock, they just need a, kind of a, a level beach, which kinda leaves out a lot of the shoreline along the, along the south or the lakeshore there.
What, what happens during the wintertime with the kayaks?
Well, that would be up to them, they maintain, they maintain it, they carry the insurance. It's all run by solar, so there's no electricity hookups or anything, and the cost to the city is all upfront, and the payback is about two years, two to three years, and after that, the city would share in the revenue from the, from the rentals and so forth, so.
Very equal idea, I like that.
So, so it's just something to think about, and, you know, if you want, we can talk about it a little more at the work session. That's, that's agreeable to everybody?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, move on to the next item on the agenda is the Police Department and Chief Mitch Johnson.
Okay.
By the way, Mitch, you're invited to the work session when it comes up.
We'll be on vacation that week, so.
Be what?
On vacation.
Ah, okay.
So I don't know if that's, it's gonna work for me, but.
Do you want somebody to represent you, or?
I can bring somebody, I could have somebody possibly come in. They're gonna be on call, so.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to you before.
Yeah.
Before the work session.
Yeah, yep, well, that's fine. We can make, make an arrangement there, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um, for the highlights, again, May, we had two hundred eighty-nine calls per service. April, we had two fifty-four, so they're kinda on the up, a little bit, a little busier. Do you guys have any questions on any of the highlights that we had from the previous month, or any questions on them that I can answer for those?
Are the, are the signs up yet for the golf carts?
Oh, yeah, yep, they're up and they're posted, there's one at the Hobo Park, and there's one at the beach.
Oh, okay.
They're there right, one at the beach entrance, and then right at the first Hobo Park entrance. So I know they're being used, people are reading them, and we've had a couple, people wanna challenge what's, what's on the signs, but that is what it is, so. But yeah, they've seemed to be working pretty well, they look really nice, so, pretty self-explanatory, so they got the basic information on the maps on there, so.
Taking a lot of golf carts out already, so.
Oh, yeah, we haven't had anything too crazy, so I know Amber's caught a couple just driving on the sidewalks when they shouldn't be, and then a couple miners driving when they shouldn't be driving, and stuff like that, so we've addressed a couple issues like that, so.
Okay.
But nothing crazy or major, so. But other than that, only thing, other thing I have is kinda, well, the, the social media compliance Civic Plus kinda approached myself, and we talked with Tiffany, just to do the fact of social media these days, they're, they're requiring any data requests, so if you, if someone, if we were to get a data request from our social media, like such as Facebook or whatever, to, to grab all that data is, could be a little difficult for us cuz we don't really have the, the means of doing it, besides basically going back individually and trying to grab that information. If we get something that's deleted off our page, like for say, let's say someone makes a comment, and then they delete it, we can't go back and re-find that statement, but by law, we're required to provide, if we had a data request, to provide all that information. So this company basically allows, basically monitors your page and backs up your data, and anything that's deleted, they can, they can grab. They can basically, anything that's posted on your Facebook page, they're able to retain it. Doesn't matter how many years back it goes, but they're able to track it and keep it in line, so if we do ever would get a data request that we wouldn't have to spend hours and hours and hours and hours trying to figure out where it's at and how to recall it. I don't know, Tiffany, if there's any, anything else that I'm missing? So they're looking at trying to cover the city and the Police Department, the City of Wilmer does it right now. I guess I'm not, you know, I'm not sold on this right now, but they originally, there was very high cost. They said it was over for a year, was it the seven grand?
Yeah, like seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, seventy-five hundred dollars, which I said there's no way that we can afford that, and plus, there's like a five percent.
Yeah, five percent annual.
Yeah, five percent annual increase. So I, as we were talking, I said, you know, we, we could maybe afford, you know, three thousand. I said that would be, and then she's like, oh, yeah, we could do three thousand. So, but then she sent back the email with seven thousand figures, so I don't know. She's very hard-pressed to get us going, I, I do get it, I mean, I, I do agree with her that this is a, something that we need to maybe look into at some point. I don't know if, there's other companies out there that do it, she's willing to, if you had a work session at some point, to chime in, like on Zoom, and just kinda explain the program to you better than probably what I'm explaining, I'm not that familiar with it. But it's basically a data retention thing that she, that company that goes and monitors your pages, and that at any time, at any point in time, that you would get a data request, they would produce that report for you, and they have the capabilities of storing every deleted message, anything that's programmed, all they need to do is they put in a date, they don't even put a time and a specific subject maybe, and boom, it just populates, and it prints out a, a nice report, and you can just, boom, send off the data request, and, and it's done probably within five minutes, but.
How many data requests have we had to date?
None, so. Maybe we have none, not kinda wood, I mean, I, I don't, the stuff that we put on for PD, I mean, it's usually regarding, you know, events that are going on, sometimes it's, you know, safety stuff that's going on, or maybe we're trying to track someone down, and I know that sometimes on there that the comments can get a little derogatory, and we have to monitor that a little bit, but we can't always delete them because it's public data, and we can't remove, only time, only thing we have on our site that says that we will remove things, if some, somebody starts cussing and swearing and, you know, kinda calling people names, then we'll start removing things. But anything else, even though we don't like the posts, we still have to keep it on there. But what happens is, like I said, people post something, and then realize it's something stupid they said, and then they delete it, but we have no means or capabilities or even trying to track and how to pull that data back. I wouldn't be able to do that, but, again, right now, there is, I mean, there's a couple cities, I know Wilmer PD and their cities doing it. There was like three or four or five other cities in the, in the state that have started doing it. But, again, we haven't had a data request on that, but I mean, I suppose it's just a matter of time, but I, I guess we, I would kinda just, maybe just look at it, I guess, maybe listen to her, I don't know. Like I said, I, I told her the one day, I said, you know, we can maybe handle three thousand and not seven grand. And then she sent back an email with a seven thousand figure, so I don't know if she was telling the truth or not.
Not sure I understand, Mitch, is this monitoring the websites and?
So like Facebook?
Facebook.
Yeah, like your Facebook, or you have Instagram accounts for the city, or the city of Starbuck, or for the Police Department? So what they do is they monitor our pages, and then they track basically everything that's been posted on our sites, and any comments or any type of pictures, or anything that we put out there, or anybody that responds to us on our page publicly, they track everything, and so let's say, you know, I, let's say we post something on the Starbucks PD website, or not the website, but their Facebook page, then let's say someone, whatever he tracks or comment doesn't want it, and for some reason, we'd say someone wants the data request about that conversation, and wants to see that information that was put out there cuz maybe they own a defensive, or whatever the case may be. This company has the capabilities of taking that data and finding it and keeping it on record for us, and they can find it within seconds instead of us trying to look for days trying to find it, which we probably never find anything deleted, but they'll track anything, so it could be five, six, seven years ago, and all they do is they have a program, they put in a.
So, so if somebody texts Joan or Tiffany, or sends them an email or something, it doesn't track that?
Nope, just on, just a social media site, only like Facebook and Instagram.
And so they could also post something on their account, on their wall, and say Starbucks Police Department, blah, 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 it wouldn't track that either, so.
No, it won't track, it only track our own website, so if someone shares a, a post of ours, and then someone starts a comment line down there, they won't track that. It only track what's on our site, and the only, and the only pulled data that is specifically to our social media.
I think maybe we can discuss it, but you know, the, the cost and benefit.
I, I, I mean, I'd say no, I mean, absolutely not, I'm not playing, playing that seven grand thing, and of course, I should, I said three thousand, I should've said a thousand.
Right.
I was just looking at a number, she's like, well, what would look, and I said, I don't know, maybe three thousand, and then she's, oh, yeah, we could do that.
For the first year, and then the second year, it's like, oh, sorry, yeah, I forgot to tell you, we're up to seven thousand for year two now, so.
So, and again, I don't know if there's other, she's the only one that's ever reached out to us, it's the first time that we've been in contact, but she was so persistent, like she called her office daily, and I got like three or four emails daily, and I just said, hey, yeah, I'll present it, and I'll, and I'll come back to you, and if the council wants to meet with you at a work session, I'll let you know, if they don't, then.
I say, I say we table it for now.
I agree, I mean, for Wilmer, it might make sense with the population size, but for us, I don't see any return on investment on something like that at the time being, so.
Yeah.
I would agree with Steve, for my Councilman Gorder.
Is this something you can sign up for at any time, or?
Oh, yeah, you can sign up anytime, she was just.
Or get out of it at any time, or?
I don't know what the, the parameters are to getting out, I just know that, again, she just wanted us to present it to you, and then wanted me to talk to her, or let us know if she wanted, if you guys wanted to meet at a work session and let her present. I said that would be a possibility, I said that was up to them, up to you guys, and then if not, then I would just tell her that we're just gonna move on for now, so.
Well, I'll second the motion to table it for now, and.
Okay.
I know, if everybody's in favor of that, we can either bring it up at the next council meeting or the work session, or whatever, so.
Well, what do you, what do you want me to tell her, that you're still thinking about it, or just gonna drop it?
I think we could just say we'll reach out if we're gonna pursue this.
Okay.
They're gonna have a internal conversation and reach out.
Perfect.
That way she probably stops.
I'd rather just, yeah, cuz it's getting annoying.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Yeah, so, all right, perfect, sounds good. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch.
Yeah, I guess we don't have anything from the Fire Department, water and sewer. I don't know if there's anything you wanna talk about there.
Yeah, Randy, Randy had a couple of requests. First one is he would like to request that the pay rate for Larry Disrude for part-time help be raised to seventeen fifty an hour. It's currently at sixteen dollars, and he pretty much works year-round for us whenever we need him, so.
Oh, year-round?
Whenever we need him, not every day, but.
Okay.
How much of an increase would that be?
A dollar fifty. We're currently, well, that'll come up later, but we're paying our part-time summer help that's just starting sixteen dollars, and that's currently what Larry's also getting, so.
Yeah, I know Mike and Randy do appreciate what he does, and when, I mean, he can pretty much, he can pretty much show up anytime when, when they need somebody.
He's been great to work with.
He's been working with us for how long, about three years or more?
Probably his fourth year right now.
Fourth year?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the dollar fifty an hour raise for Larry Disrude.
I'll second that.
Who was first?
Mary, give her credit for one.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the pay increase for Larry Disrude to seventeen fifty an hour, seconded by Councilwoman Bakel, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I don't know if you wanna talk about the bids, or?
Sure, the second thing that Randy has here are some bids for repairing a few blocks in different areas. Two of them are detours that were used for the 2020 road project, and the third one is just an intersection that's in really poor shape, that was kind of used as an alternative detour, and I know he's working with Mindot trying to get a little extra money for that, but I'm not sure he will. So currently, he got two bids, one from Riley's, Joe Riley's, and one from Ferguson. Riley's bid came out, what's highlighted in orange there, two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars, and Ferguson's came in at one fifty-two, four ninety-nine. So out of that money, Mindot will reimburse us fifty-four thousand dollars for damage to the road during the 2020 road project, and we have seventy thousand in our budget for road repair this year, and we just got information this morning that the state is giving us another one-time small cities assistance infrastructure payment of twenty thousand dollars to end of July. So that'll come in just shorts, four or five thousand dollars short of the hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar quote, if we use all that.
I, I would say that Mike Erickson took me around on Saturday morning, and showed me all the spots that they were gonna do, and without a question, they certainly need it. And I guess if we're that close in dollars, I'd like to see it being done. The roads were just, yeah, they were, they were in rough shape, and I, I guess I'd be in favor of us doing it, doing Ferguson bid at the one fifty-two, forty, four ninety-nine, and I could make that a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the Ferguson asphalt paving bid of one hundred fifty-two thousand, four ninety-nine to do the street repair project on John Street and Highway twenty-eight to Sixth, Sixth Street, and Abercrombie, Highway twenty-eight to Broadway, and the intersection of Bingham and Fourth Street, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any further questions or discussion?
Was this one of the areas concerned when we had all of the streets assessed, and we did a priority list of which ones were most damaged? I think, was that Witseth that did that, or?
I'm not sure if this was on there prior to that, I know that these were the streets that were used for detours that happened after that assessment was done.
They're a different detour. There are different deter routes too, weren't they, than what they proposed initially?
Yeah, some of these kind of got to be unofficial alternate detours that were being used that weren't the official MINDOT detours.
So.
But I don't know if they were on the assessment list before or not.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now turn it back to Joan.
Um, yeah, just a couple more quick things, just to remind you that the office is going to be closed, um, in observance of Juneteenth. On June nineteenth. And the other thing I had was a notice from the state that the Emerald Ash Bor has been found in Pope County. So they're going to be sending out more information on that, but. There's a quarantine on Ashwood that's happened. There's also a Zoom meeting if anybody's interested. Um, you can register at, um, the state address on the bottom of the first page there.
And, uh, they're requesting that we not move any wood around.
Right, that it needs to come from certified licensed sources and.
Right, so, okay.
And that's all I have.
Do we need a, we don't need a motion on that?
No, it's just more of an FYI.
I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything on that. So we'll move on to the, uh. The, uh, I guess we have nothing from planning and zoning or. The airport committee or streets and parks or the community center. So move on to new business. First item is to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments.
I'll make a motion. We approve that. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twelve. Declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments. Seconded. The motion was made by Councilman Gorder and seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve, approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen approving a public hearing. On the proposed assessments for the twenty twenty road project.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen approving a public hearing on proposed assessments for the twenty twenty road project.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen. Approving a public hearing on proposed assessments for the twenty twenty road project, seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve hiring Peyton Johnson as part-time summer help for the city of Starbucks at a rate of sixteen dollars per hour.
I'll make the motion to approve hiring Peyton Johnson.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve hiring of Peyton Johnson as part-time summer help for the city of Starbucks. At a rate of sixteen dollars an hour, seconded by Councilman Christensen. Uh, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item is approve hiring Noah Jensen as part-time summer help for the city of Starbucks at a rate of sixteen dollars an hour.
I'll make a motion. We approve hiring Noah Jensen as part-time summer help for the city at a rate of sixteen dollars an hour.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve hiring Noah Johnson as part-time summer help for the city of Starbucks at a rate of sixteen dollars an hour. Seconded by Councilman Christensen. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, the next item on the agenda is to approve Berserker Cup Strongman Competition in City Park on Saturday, August twenty-fourth. I should tell you that I've talked with, uh, uh, Nick Rogers about this. He's the promoter. He. Works for, uh, as a dispatcher up in Alexandria and, uh, he lives in Starbucks. I asked him to be at the council meeting to kind of give us a brief rundown of the event, uh. But he had a conflict and couldn't make it, uh, tonight. But he'd be more than happy to, to meet with us either at a work session or at next council meeting, so. I don't know if you want to, uh. Make a decision on this tonight or if you'd like more information. But it looks like a wonderful event for Starbucks and I think would bring a lot of new people to town and, uh. I think he told me that, uh, just that one post that you got in your packet. He put on Facebook and, uh, he's already gotten close to five thousand responses. And I asked him, well, how, how did that compare to, uh, last year? And they've been running this competition up at, uh, at, uh.
Carlos Creek.
The what?
Carlos Creek.
Yeah, the Carlos Creek winery in Alec for a few years and, uh. He said last year they maybe had around two thousand responses, you know, for, at this time, so.
Mitch, do you think we would be able to get security for that event? Like get one of our part-timers to come down and help with that?
I don't know, part-timers, whatever, so stressed, but I mean. If we, uh, I mean, possibly we could get someone off on duty. I know they, it has grown, like, they're expecting, they needed a larger location, so that's why they're looking to come down here because of the. People coming into this. Maybe in the worst case, they, they could hire, I mean, the, uh, posse members. If they make a donation to them. And they, depending on how many are available, four, five, six, and then we, at least could be available and maybe extra officers just in case on the campus. Sounds like they're pretty.
Yeah, I think they do carry all the insurance and they, they will have the park closed off and you have to pay for admittance to get in. I think it's ten dollars or something admission.
Where is parking being held though?
What's that?
I mean, there's gonna be parking and additional traffic in town too, so I mean, I think we'd still want.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Police presence.
Hopefully, yeah. So.
Um, I would be, um, fine with them coming to the next council meeting and giving more information about that and. I definitely think that's a good event for the city to draw people in.
Would he be willing to come to our work session?
I think so, yeah. He's got, uh, well, we, we're looking at Monday, the nineteenth, right?
Yep.
He's got Mondays and Tuesdays off, so I think he'd be more than willing to come to our work session.
Throw that out to him and then we can visit with him. Then that gives him more time if we do approve it. To advertise and what he has to do.
Sure. Okay, that, that works for everybody. Uh, I'll, uh. Uh, have him here for the work session on, on the nineteenth, so.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Was it seventeen?
Seventeen. We'll be closed on the nineteenth.
Oh, the night, yes, that's right. Seventeen, sorry. Okay, uh, we'll move on then to the, next item on the agenda is to approve a five hundred dollar donation. From Hobo Park to the Minnewaska Lake Association.
I'll make a motion. We approve the five hundred dollar donation from Hobo Park to the Minnewaska Lake Association.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to. Approve the five hundred dollar donation from Hobo Park to the Minnewaska Lake Association, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item is approve a public hearing for Lowry State Bank to sub, subdivide, uh. PID number twenty-seven dash zero four zero nine zero zero one and sell the north fifty-eight point thirty-two feet, which is currently a rental property.
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing for Lowry State Bank to subdivide parcel PID twenty-seven dash zero four zero nine dash zero zero one.
Okay.
Now I'm gonna second that.
Uh, so we have a motion by, uh, Councilman Tafe to, uh, approve a public hearing for Lowry State Bank to subdivide. Parcel number twenty-seven dash zero four to zero nine dash zero zero one and sell the north fifty-eight point thirty-two feet, which is currently a rental property. Seconded by Councilwoman Gor, uh, Balko. Question I had is, is that the one on Wallen?
No, it's the one right next to my shop.
Oh, what?
Right next to my shop where they have their ATM.
It used to be a dog grooming business.
Okay, I gotcha.
They want to keep the, uh, parking lot with the ATM for the bank and then they want to sell the building.
Oh, okay, okay. Is there any further questions or discussion? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item is to approve hiring lifeguards for the attached list for the twenty twenty-four. Summer season at a rate of twelve dollars per now, per hour for year one, twelve fifty for year two and thirteen. Per hour for year three, and I think Joan had some comments on that.
After I, uh, had put this together, Linda had sent me an email, um, showing what Glenwood is paying for their lifeguards. So I don't know if we want to match that or, and also the beach supervisor. I don't know if we want to match that or leave it as it is.
What's the difference?
Uh, it's seventy-five cents an hour. Until the third year, it's a dollar an hour. Different.
What's the, uh, what's the supervisor pay?
Supervisor pay right now is like sixteen fifty, which is, needs to be raised.
I, I'll make the motion to approve the increase in wages for the lifeguards and approve the, uh. List of lifeguards she submitted.
I'll second that.
Now is matching the Glenwood proposal?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to, uh, approve hiring lifeguards for the, uh. For the attached secondary list. For the twenty twenty-four summer season at a rate of, uh, twelve seventy-five for first year. Thirteen twenty-five to fourteen dollars based on the number of years, so.
Thirteen twenty-five and then fourteen for year three and up.
And seconded by Councilman Gorder, right?
Yep.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve payment for the material bid from Lyman Lumber in the amount of. Eleven thousand, eight seventy-six thirty-three, so Dennis Lawson can start on the construction of the Marina Lighthouse.
I'll make a motion. We approve payment of the material bid from Lyman Lumber in the amount of. Eleven thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-three cents, so Dennis Lawson can start on the construction of the Marina Lighthouse.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve payment of the material bid from Lyman Lumber in the amount of. Eleven thousand, eight seventy-six thirty-three. So Dennis Lawson can start on the construction of the Marina Lighthouse, seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, last item on the agenda is to approve. Uh, a raffle for the Minnewaska Community Health Services for September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the raffle for the Minnewaska Community Health Services for nine thirty twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilman Christensen to approve the raffle for Minnewaska Community Health Services for. September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Do we want to talk about the fire department?
I think we should.
Okay, we probably should have added that to the agenda, but we can, that's okay. Do you want to talk about that, Chris?
Uh, we had just mentioned in, uh, was it two months ago at the meeting that we were going to. Shift, dedicate, uh, some of the public funding that we got for public services to the fire department. I believe it was around twenty thousand dollars. I can't remember the exact number.
Can't remember if it's twenty thousand or twenty percent.
Right.
Yeah, I think it was twenty percent.
I think the total grant was sixty-three thousand and this was, the grant was for, um, police, fire, public safety and, um. Salaries like employees pay and so I think we had, I, if I recall correctly, it was twenty-five percent because we, we broke it up evenly.
I think it was twenty-five or twenty.
I think it was twenty.
Was it twenty? Okay. I would have to check my notes on that.
Yeah, I can't remember.
I have them in front of me.
I just know we had talked about it, so I thought we should, uh, move forward with it.
So then that money would be dedicated towards the fire department to use for any planned, um, things that they were gonna use.
Joan told me that the funds could be transferred to their account. But the council still has control over the spending of that.
Yep.
You know, so council would still have to approve all the purchases or use of that money.
And then one of the other things too was that Dog Noise is gonna bring a list of the improvements you'd like to see as well too, so that could help guide our decision.
Do that in the future, so.
Yeah, but this way it's just making sure that that money, uh, is proven that is, is going towards the fire department, not just used elsewhere.
Yep. I, I think the fire department truly has a need for that money, uh, and, and. And I know the city does too. Uh, they've got a lot of places where that could go, but. I think we need to, um, keep a good relationship, working relationship with our fire department. And I would make a motion that we approve the twenty percent of that grant or the money we received. Whatever it was of sixty-three thousand and some odd dollars and cents. Um, so I would make that a motion. We approve that.
And I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Councilman Gorder to, uh, approve transferring, uh, the, uh, twenty percent of the, uh. What was that?
Public safety grant.
The public safety grant, uh, to the fire department, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Uh, is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I'll motion we adjourn the regular meeting.
So I have a motion to adjourn, uh, so we are adjourned.